Good evening. I call the meeting for the April 13 regular meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harper, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right. Well, now is the time for our invocation, which Ms. Dixon's going to give, and the pledge of allegiance, which I am most happy to do.
Please rise. Creator God, we give thanks for our great nation and ask that you help us to unite, no matter our race, creed, sex, or faith during these challenging times. We pray for all public officials and decision-makers for wisdom and guidance as we make critical decisions for the future welfare of our city, our county, and our country. We pray for the continued rollout of the COVID vaccines as more people are eligible to receive it now, healing to all those who have contracted the virus, and comfort to those who have lost loved ones during this pandemic. We give thanks for all health care workers, first responders, teachers, essential workers, and for all those on the front line who put their own health at risk for the sake of others. Gracious God, help us remember that you are with us at all times and in all things. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, we have a notice to the public, please.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is the time for council announcements and/or reports from council members on committee activities. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports?
I do. I met with Debbie Finster of the Pacific Marine Mammal Center in Laguna Beach about the danger of whales being caught in fishing lines and what the Pacific Mammal Center is doing to help prevent this. And she will be bringing a request for a grant to us in the future because apparently over 50% of their activities are done off the coast of Newport, not just Laguna. Along with Mayor Avery, I attended the opening of Vaccination Center at Orange County Fairgrounds and listened to several of the Board of Supervisors and the Chief Medical Officer of Orange County talk about our efforts and the progress that we're making. I also attended the Zoom meeting of the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee, as well as meeting weekly, sometimes twice weekly, with those in the community who've been following these efforts closely. I asked former Councilwoman Jean Watt, Nancy Scarborough, and Charles Klow of SPON to help me be educated on all matters related to housing. In addition, I invited former Mayor Nancy Gardner, who chaired the last General Plan Update Committee, to join in a group along with Susan DeSantis from the Housing Element Update Committee, who works closely with housing and community development in Sacramento, to help me understand these issues along the way. In addition, I've met and talked with Councilmember O'Neill and Chair Tucker at various times on this topic because things were changing, as was our understanding of what the state was asking of us. And after all of this and watching multiple meetings, I still find this topic confounding and am concerned that we are going to be asked to approve something in two weeks that we don't fully understand. And I also have a town hall meeting coming up on April 29 at 5:00 p.m. It's a Zoom meeting. And as a result of the Dover Shores traffic changes that we authorized and the work that the people in the Dover Shores community did to gather ideas and develop consensus about what they wanted to do in their area, we did a survey in Coronel Mar about traffic. And what we're having is, we're having a meeting where Dave Webb and his staff talk about if you want changes in traffic circulation in your community, what the process is and how people go about gathering together and developing consensus. So that's going to be talked about at our town hall meeting. We also have Mike Sina Corey coming to that meeting, who's going to be talking about the process for undergrounding. We have some assessment districts in Coronel Mar, but not all. And so Mike will be outlining the process that people need to go through for that. In addition, there's a meeting on this Thursday morning at 7:30 a.m., the CDM meeting, board meeting, and anyone can log on to that. It's a Zoom meeting. It's cdmra.org. And we have Traffic Commander Damon Soros talking about the recent traffic operation that we conducted in Newport Beach that involved the CHP and the Bureau of Automotive Repair and the DMV and the CHP. Did I say the CHP? And they had several traffic stops. Commander Soros is going to talk about how that came together, how the costs were covered, and it's really an interesting presentation. So anyone, whether you're a member of CDMRA or not, can log on and get updated on that. I also would like to, Councilwoman Dixon and I would like to A1 an item that we're calling Better Beaches. And we'd like to ensure that the city's beaches are safe and enjoyable for residents and visitors in light of the growing number of beachgoers. We're requesting staff to review and discuss, number one, the current resources allocated to maintain, manage, and secure our beaches, as well as, number two, alternatives and cost information associated with providing a higher level of service at city beaches for trash pickup, boardwalk ambassadors, lifeguard coverage, and code enforcement as part of the presentation for the proposed fiscal year 2122 budget. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Dixon? Oh, Mr. O'Neill, sorry.
Yep. So I was able to attend the Battle of the Bay, the football game between Coronel Mar High School and Newport Harbor High School. Congrats to CDM. But it was really fantastic seeing a lot of our student athletes out there and a lot of the parents and grandparents enjoying it as well. And then the next night, I was able to go to the Coronel Mar High School play, which, again, fantastic that they're doing all of this and they're finding ways to make it work for our high school students. So to all of our administrators and parents, students, thank you. It was fantastic. We had the Housing Element Advisory Update Committee where the discussion was sending the draft Housing Element with proposed modifications up to the Planning Commission and then the City Council. Today, I attended the Vaccination Clinic, a partnership between the City of Newport Beach and Hoag Hospital. We had over at Oasis Senior Center. My thanks in particular to Kristin Thompson over in our fire department, and also to our Recreation Senior Services Department, our lifeguard department, and our fire department for making that work. We saw over 300 people three weeks ago, so hopefully we saw the same 300 people today since it was Pfizer and you needed two shots. So anyway, I just want to say thank you for making that work. And then I've got a slide. Yep. So with nearly 400 camps, Camp Newport is ready to help your kids find some fun in Newport Beach this summer. This year's camps include surfing, sailing, bodyboarding, science, art, sports, and more. Camp Newport will help campers find ways to enjoy the summer, make memories, and connect with others in a safe environment. Register today at www.campnewport.com. Sign up by May 31 and receive a 10% or more discount. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. A few meetings, several meetings of our Short Term Rental ad hoc committee over the last two or three weeks. Last Friday, I visited the new Bridge Shelter, homeless shelter, with Natalie Vesmasian and the staff that's now the primarily Costa Mesa, City of Costa Mesa staff, neighborhood improvement coordinators that are now staff there. I missed, I was out of town when the grand opening, so I wanted to go and see the facility. And it is amazing. It's something that both cities can be very proud of, and I commend staff and our staff for negotiating and the council members that we approved the partnership with Costa Mesa. It's a facility that we can be proud of. And I know in the course of the next several weeks, after Costa Mesa transitions its temporary shelter residents into the Bridge Shelter, then we will be beginning to do the same thing from the homeless that are residing in our public spaces. So I ask everyone to be patient because we're still getting letters concerned about the homeless that are at Balboa Pier Transit Center around our sidewalks. And we are seeing an end to this when the city can begin to enforce our anti-camping ordinances. And I have to say that I am very proud of what our city is participating in. It's, the shelter provides wraparound services to make sure these homeless residents who will be part of the shelter get the necessary care and just ministerial registrations that they need and doctor visits and transportation. I mean, it's, we as a community, or both of our communities, should be very proud. So I'm very glad and I appreciate Natalie's continued work on this and representing our city quite well. Last Saturday, I spoke at the annual meeting of the Lido Isle Community Association and reviewed city issues and updates. And next Monday is April 19 is the Aviation Committee, just a reminder, at 5:00 p.m. And Mr. Blom and myself, Chair and Co-Chair, Vice Chair of the meeting, and look forward to a good discussion on our aviation issues. And I just learned this afternoon that one of our active residents, who is very much active in our aviation matters, Sue Devorak. Is Sue a member of the committee? No. Is Sue a member of the committee? Yeah, Aviation Committee. Yes, she is. I thought so. Sue Devorak, who's a member of our Aviation Committee, excuse, sorry, Sue, if you just heard that. But she's now been appointed to the Orange County Aviation Commission. So that's a very good partnership that we will enjoy with, between the county and the Board of Supervisors, continuing our longstanding good relationship with Orange County Board of Supervisors, but especially now with Sue as a member of both our committee and the county's commission. I think that will be good for the city. Also, I have my announcement for the city, the new Civic Center Native Plant Tour app. I hope people are, this is a plug for MyNB app. If you haven't downloaded it from the App Store, you should because it's, I use it regularly to send messages about maintenance issues or streetlights are out. And we're, the staff is always adding new features that is going, that we're going to be adding, trash cans that need to be emptied. And My Newport Beach app now has this Civic Center Native Plant Tour on it and enhances self-guided tours through our Civic Center Park and identifies plant species and details into plant communities and habitats. And it's in-depth information for the 1.2 miles of walking trails. And go to, from the MyNB app home screen, click on Discover NB and then Civic Center Tour. And you will see the Native Plant Tour along with the sculpture exhibition and other self-guided tours. It's a great resource with a lot of features. So if you don't have it, I encourage you to download it. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to talk about some document shredding real quick. It's like my favorite thing. Right after tax season, perfect. That's when we want to shred, shred all those past ones. But CRN with Newport, we're going to be offering a free document shredding and e-waste disposal. We've added a little something extra where you can bring in some electronic devices. It'll be on Saturday, April 24, 8:00 a.m. to noon. It'll be at the Harvard Day School Parking Lot, right on Pacific View Drive over there. The event is only for Newport residents, so please bring some ID with you. And you can bring up to 10 standard file boxes for shredding. So bring the whole family so you can do all 100 boxes. And that's the best ticket there. No other household hazardous waste will be accepted. And if you need more information, go to our website, newportbeachca.gov/shred. Thank you.
Thank you. Good thing to take advantage of that. Mr. Duffield.
I have a bit of an odd announcement, but so you got who you got. So I got to miss last meeting because I raced from the Newport Pier to the Cabo San Lucas, which is an annual race. It's been going on about 60 years. And we did pretty well, first in our class, second boat to finish. So that means old guys still can do it. But that's all I have to report. Good news is that it's an annual thing that we've been, that this harbor's been participating in, and it's still going very strong. The record was broken by eight hours, and it will not ever be broken again, I don't think. Typically, there's never that much wind. It blew hard the entire way. So it was a fun, fun and scary thing. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. And I've got a couple of announcements. I attended the, I'm on the Board of Directors, the Orange County Sanitation District, and I attended the Board of Directors meeting. And again, I just always kind of praise that organization as just an exceptional example of good government and doing a tremendous service for our county. And I wanted to get a little more clarity on the business license tax waiver and remind businesses to take advantage of it. And it's something we, the council feels strongly about, just whatever we can do to kind of help businesses from the impacts of the pandemic. So it's a temporary waiver, and it'll be waived for eligible businesses that renew between April 1 of this year and March 31 of 2022. And it's for businesses that were impacted by COVID. And so for most of those businesses, that means they were shut down over a period of time. And businesses that receive the waiver will be notified with an insert in their renewal form. Businesses are still required to return their renewal form with no payment due. And if you believe your business is eligible but did not receive a waiver, you're not done. You can please complete the online appeal form at www.nuitportbeachca.gov/vtwaiver. And the forms will also be available in the old-school way by simply calling City Hall or by email, licensing@newportbeachca.gov. And the number to call is 949-718-1996. So don't miss it. And then if you've been reading the news lately, California's, you know, on the precipice of another drought period, and water is becoming more precious. And so I think it's going to get everyone's attention in the next year or two. And so I hope everyone will join me in taking the pledge. And that's done through the Wyland Foundation, and it's called the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. So for me, it's sort of personal because it's a challenge between mayors. And it takes place right now through the end of April, which is Earth Month. And so the more people we can get in the city to go online and take up the challenge, the better. So it's just taking a pledge to save water. And it only takes a minute. I did it, and I was, I'm very suspect of taking any kind of signup thing online. But this pledge was very easy and just literally took a minute. And it just asks you some questions, and you just respond that you're going to do your best to conserve water and try to help the planet out here. So, and then if Newport Beach wins the challenge, you can be eligible to win prizes. So as of today, Newport Beach is in eighth place out of all the cities in our size in the nation. So they've broken it down into small cities, like Laguna's not in, we're not competing directly with Laguna Beach because they are in the size, city size of under 29,900 residents. But we're in a larger city size, and so we're competing against those cities. So we're eighth place, and our neighbor Laguna Beach is in first place amongst its category. And this is all done by Wyland, so they're really behind it. And it's kind of neat to see. So I just ask everyone to take the Wyland National Mayor's Challenge. We can have some friendly competition and try to make Newport Beach number one. And so thank you very much. And that's www.mywaterpledge.com. And that's the end of my, my report. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar related to items 1 through 14? Councilmember O'Neill.
No, I'll lodge a no vote on 14. I just, I don't, I think we should push it a year. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon.
Yes, I'd like to pull item 11, please.
Councilmember Blom.
No.
Councilmember Duffield. Mayor Protem Muldoon.
Yes, and I have too. I'd like to also lodge a no vote on item 14. And I have a conflict on item 10 due to a small wireless company that's approached me to be an advisor on their board. So there's a potential business conflict.
Okay, so you're pulling item two?
Oh, no, no. I have a conflict on 10.
Conflict?
Yeah.
All right.
I have a motion for you when you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
And I am not pulling anything. And so do we have a motion?
Yes, we do. I move the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 14 with amendment to the minutes, with item 11 pulled by Councilwoman Dixon, a no vote, item 14 by Councilmember O'Neill and myself, and a conflict on item number 10 by myself.
All right. Do we have a second? Mr. Brenner, seconds. Okay, now we'll hear public comments from those in the council chambers. If you've called in to speak on this item, you're up next. Know that if we are watching via the internet or on NBTV, there is a 30-plus second delay. Therefore, please listen through your phone for the go-ahead to begin speaking. All right.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just had two quick comments on this. Regarding number three, the acceptance of a grant to purchase safety boats for the Marina Park Sailing Program, shouldn't you direct staff to correct the spelling of the word Zodiac in the resolution so that in future years, people searching for this resolution can find it without having to guess that it was misspelled? And then as to item 13, which is a routine item telling you what happened at the most recent Planning Commission meeting, I don't know if you were confused by this. I noticed online as posted the correct action report, but in the lobby, item 13, this recycled report from the March 4 Planning Commission meeting, which you received and filed many, a couple of meetings ago. So I hope the correct copy will be archived when the meeting is put on Laserfish and not this one. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other public comment from the community room or the council chambers? Okay, I'm seeing none. Do we have any phone calls? Okay, any additional council comments? All right. So let's vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I polled the item 11, Professional Service Agreement with Newport Beach and Company for Government Access Channel Management, first of all, I'm pleased with the Newport Beach and Company and how they're managing our audiovisual needs and the Newport, the public television aspect, community television aspect of the program. What I want to comment about is maybe we need an amendment to the agreement subject to the city manager's opinion on this. But my personal opinion is that we still have work to do to create more interesting video, videos, postings of what's going on in the city. And I think the current contract does a great job of providing the content of our public meetings, such as the City Council meetings and the Planning Commission meetings, and that is serviceable. And it's placed on our website. I just don't get a sense that it's dynamic in terms of reaching our, can I have more time?
Yes.
Reaching, reaching our audience, our target audiences are the residents of Newport Beach. And I, we, just as Councilmember Brenner mentioned a few moments ago, I mean, we all know that the Housing Element discussion is critical. And this could, well, I know that there's postings on the Newport Together part of our website. I don't know if the linkages are there to make it interesting for people to be drawn into the current issues of the day and important issues to the city and our future in an interesting and compelling way. So I guess my question is directed to the city manager. Can we, I know there is flexibility in the language of the amendment or the attachment, excuse me, that says, somewhere here, that says that they can substitute other programming. I just wonder if it's scope of services on page A2 or 1118, for item 11, page 18. It says, "Programming may include, but it is not limited to the following. Programs listed below may be canceled or substituted with alternative programming. Also included is an estimated number of production hours required." So we really, those are, that's fine. We kind of straitjacketed all this. But there may be other elements that are featured. So I, I think this is really a communications issue between Newport Beach and Company and city staff as to how, within the scope of services, within the current costs, that there can be more human interest stories about Newport Beach. Maybe, and Newport Beach and Company is an excellent marketing organization. That's why they do what they do. I just might like to see more of that integrated. And while this is, what I'm going to say next is a little off-topic, but it's related to engaging our residents in the workings of the city. I think it's time, and maybe I will A1 this at the next meeting, I should have done today, to look at our website. It's probably too late even to put anything in our current budget proposal, but maybe.
We actually are in the middle of doing the redesign of the website now.
Yay, good. All right. So I'll wait. I'll be patient. So that's good. So with a new website, it will be all the more important that we have created visual linkages and community engagement opportunities, feature stories of our businesses. I'd just like to see more of that with our video service contract with Newport Beach and Company. So is that possible within this contract?
I think it's very well possible within the scope of the services outlined here. While all the programs are detailed in here, it does make the point that there's flexibility to cancel, supplement, you know, trade, you know, swap out. And I do think that's something particularly now that we're coming out of the pandemic and we can be focused on that type of programming, what the needs are coming out through that. So I think that can be done through this, the current contract as it's laid out, and we will certainly work closely with.
Well, that's good. I do understand in talking with Newport Beach and Company that they are a little bit handcuffed because during election years, council election years, the dozen or so community forums takes up a lot of their inventory. And while that's certainly interesting to residents, of And while that's certainly interesting to residents, of course, but that doesn't leave room for much else.
Right, right. And, you know, and we also have to take care, this is all general fund money that we're spending here manually, you know, at about $150,000 a year. And so being, you know, taxpayer funds and for services that benefit, you know, our residents, we have to be structured.
Well, yeah, but it is funded by the cable companies, too, the public...
Not this amount.
But not this amount?
No, not for, they cannot pay for salaries and for the general ongoing program.
What about content?
Not for content. So it can be paid for...
Capital.
Capital, our capital, to ensure that we air, you know, so...
Well, anyway, I'm pleased about the website, how we could integrate more user-friendly, resident-friendly video communications. That would be great, and if you could do it within the existing contract, I'm good. All right, thanks.
Ms. Brenner.
I actually brought this up in a meeting with Diane and Grace this week because I'm one of the people that subscribes, get my cable service through Spectrum. And the reason I do that is because I get Channel 3, and I like to watch the city activities and meetings and things that are on there. But I'm frequently disappointed because I see reruns on there so often. And what really brought this home was last week, when I turned it on, as I was reading my agenda packet, I turned this on, and I saw this great forum that had Gary Sherwin and Steve Rosansky and Mario Marokovich and Jim Walker. And they were talking about coming out of the pandemic and what was going to be happening. And I heard Gary say Disneyland was opening on July, in the middle of July. And I went, really? It's not opening until then? And then some other things were said that I was going, really? That doesn't sound right. And then I found out that it had been recorded right after Memorial Day last year. And so Gary and I have talked about making sure we put on there when something is a rerun and maybe the date that it's recorded. But the bigger concern is that we're showing reruns from that long ago. And there are so many fascinating things going on in our community that I'm, I'm just appalled that we could just have Ed Olend follow Mayor, former Mayor O'Neil around and go to the CDM football game and the plays that are put on by our schools. And, I mean, I would really like to see this be something that serves our community and maybe shows the school board meetings as well as the City Council meetings because this is a vibrant community, and there's so much going on. And it really is a public service for us to provide these options. So I'm sort of thinking that maybe there should be an ad hoc committee that maybe rotates council members through it and meetings about this because I think all of us probably have connections to the community that, that we would like to see different things covered on Newport Beach Television that people can really understand everything that's happening. So I don't know, is that something that we could do, where we could be part of the programming, where it's not just city staff deciding what's on there? And if something has to be brought back as far as a budget item, where that money could come from, or, I'd just like to see this be a lot more... One of the first actions I took when I was seated on council was approving the contract with Newport Beach and Company to do this over another bidder. And at the time, it was said, you know, it's going to be a lot more vibrant, there's going to be more interesting content. And in talking to Gary, there's a lot of things they would like to do, but they're kind of not able to do it either. So I think I really want to see us look at this whole topic in a little bit broader perspective and see how we can expand it, how we can make it more valuable to our community. So how would we do that?
Well, I certainly think, Councilmember Brenner, we can get your input and work together with you. I don't know if an ad hoc is necessary to do that in terms of getting input from you and any other council members who are interested in, you know, providing more of that kind of guidance and things on the programming that's going on. So I don't think that would require further structure, and we'd certainly do that, be happy to do that.
Okay. Do we need to hear from Gary? Would it be helpful to hear from Gary about this? Well, I know he's here, I think I saw him.
He is over there, yeah.
Gary, do you have anything to add to what we're saying here?
Good evening, members of the City Council. Thank you, Councilman Brenner and Councilwoman Dixon. We are more than happy, and we have been from day one, to try to make NBTV a much more robust and more engaging channel. We have a lot of content. We actually produce a lot of content that are, that is outside the scope of this contract on behalf of the Restaurant Association and other organizations that we would love to air on NBTV. I think there's some hesitancy that airing some of this may conflict somehow with some sort of city policy. So there's been some, a little bit of hesitancy to air some of the programs we want to do. I'll give you some examples. You know, we produce these wonderful features on area chefs and some of the cuisine that's being prepared at some of the restaurants. We would love to be able to have this, not only on our social media channels and our website, but to be able to have it on NBTV. We've been told some of these things maybe aren't appropriate because of liability issues or what have you. So if we could be set free, we would love to be able to do exactly what you want and provide more robust content, but we've been told that there are some very rigid legal guidelines that we have to fall within, and so that's why some of it has not been produced. The other thing as well is that this last year, there has been very few community events, and so we haven't been able to air it, so more things are unfortunately in some of the rotation. But if we can be set free to create and produce more vibrant content on a wide variety of subjects without the concern that maybe if we feature a particular business, that somehow that's going to hurt other businesses that aren't featured, I think if we do it with the intent that we want to try to be as inclusive as possible, we would love to do that. We really would. We've always felt that way from day one. So if we can get that green light, we're there. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Gary. As you heard me mention with Grace, that the city website is being redone. I don't know who's doing it, but in terms of your video and marketing experience, expertise could certainly inform the process. Maybe, I hope that you can support staff and how they're working to incorporate more video communication. I mean, that's just 21st century communications is more video and how we can link the two.
Absolutely. And our team works with John Pope quite closely, and he's on our marketing committee as well, so...
Good, thanks.
Mr. Blom.
Ms. Arp, can you tell us about the legal issues that Gary has?
Yeah, I'm not really sure what Gary's talking about. I think we've always worked pretty well with Gary to get content on the air. But if there's specific things he's looking at, we'd be happy to work with him because we have an interest in promoting, you know, local events. And I know that we've done a fair amount of interviews with local figures. So I'm not sure exactly what Gary is specifically talking about, but, you know, we're always willing to work with him. There's some, there are some boundaries as far as how far you can go before you have to open up access to other people, but I don't think that that's, you know, in line with what Gary was talking about. So I'm happy to work with you, Gary.
Great. So if we want to do profiles on local restaurants or chefs or anything, that does not cause any legal concern?
Well, I don't think we can resolve it right here, but maybe we can set up a time and sit down and kind of take a look at what you're, what content you're talking about and see if we can work with it.
Happy to.
And if I can add, so we have done, had the restaurant features, we've worked together, and they are actually, that some of that program is on. But I want to say, well, and I don't think this is an issue of the vibrancy of the type of programming, but remember again, these are general fund dollars entirely, the $150,000 a year that we're spending. So we have to have the parameters of how we're spending our taxpayer monies and all the policies and procedures we go through there. But within that, we are so happy to work together with you, Gary. You know that.
Absolutely.
You know, to get all the best program we can. So, but we can't, we have to be very mindful and be fiduciary stewards of these funds that are general fund dollars. So that's the parameters we're talking about. It's not, I don't think it's from a legal side, it's from the use of city taxpayer funds.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, that's, that's well taken. I mean, $150,000 is no joke out of our general fund in any regard. And then the, it's fantastic that you, that we have people watching the station. I have YouTube TV, and I do not get the station. I'm not sure I've ever watched it, frankly, in the five years I've been on City Council, and I don't think I've missed much. And I mean that respectfully, but, but I, when, we have every streaming platform known to man, we're just not an entertainment, I mean, the city's there to provide information and content, but we're not an entertainment industry, and production is very expensive. So to the extent that there is a lot of content being produced of the 18% of our TOT, which I am confident that there is significant amount, I would suggest that that be put on place, especially if we're having the synergies of hiring the same company for it. So anyway, with that, thanks.
Ms. Dixon, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional service agreement with Newport Beach and Company for Government Access Channel Management and Video Production Services.
All right. And that's given the commentary we've had in the direction?
And given the modifications, it's within the same amount that has been proposed to give special note to the human interest features and other content. People are producing video content constantly. That is the 21st century, so there's probably available content we don't even have to pay for, frankly. It's just people can share their video content about a restaurant or a business or whatever. But anyway, just to look more expansively at our options. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Brenner, second? All right. Please vote.
Do we go with a public comment?
Public comment, sorry, I'm ahead of myself. Here's Jim.
Thank you, Mayor Avery, members of the council, Jim Mosher again. Pertinent to this conversation, first, I would like to point out that the City Council at one time had a Media and Communications Committee, which was not in the current trend of privately meeting ad hoc committees, but was actually a public meeting with council members and citizens on it to deal with issues of this sort. I believe it was actually the very first city meeting I ever attended was a meeting of the Media and Communications Committee. I never quite understood why it was eliminated. And then the second comment I wanted to make, although it's not really part of this agenda item, we have heard that the city website is being redone. I did not know that. Apparently, you did not know that. I would hope that the public, who the website is supposed to serve, will have an opportunity to have some input regarding that, as they may in the past have had at the Media and Communications Committee, before a new website is launched. Because what might seem user-friendly to our IT people and might seem providing the information the public wants may not be actually easy for the public to use or provide the information they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment from this chamber or the community room? All right, anything on the phones? Okay, additional council comments? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Let's vote.
With Councilmember Blom voting no, the motion carried 6-1.
Okay, and now we'll have public comment on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject and matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Avery Counts. I am here today on behalf of the Office of Supervisor Katrina Foley. Just wanted to introduce ourselves to the Council as well and give you an update on what the supervisor has been up to. The vaccination pod at the OC Fair is up and running and is operational, and she had her first board meeting today, which was a lot of fun for her. If you need our office for anything at all, please don't hesitate to call. Our number is 714-834-3220. Again, I'm Avery Counts. I'm the Constituent Services Manager for Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, do we have any more comments, public comments?
Thank you once again, Mayor Avery. This is Jim Mosher, and I have a non-agenda comment, or actually, it is to remind you that item Roman numeral 19 on your agenda tonight allows you to reconsider votes that you took at your last meeting. And I think that was meant to be your last regular meeting, not the meeting that you held at 3 o'clock this afternoon. On March 23rd, which was your last regular meeting, you may recall, five of you voted to impose a first-time-ever residential curbside trash recycling fee on the residents of Newport Coast and an increased fee on all the other residents that receive trash service from the city. I would ask you to reconsider that vote, not just because, as I tried to point out there, I believe the public is entitled to have the cost of disposing of that trash covered out of their basic property tax, so you should not be charging the fee at all. But the reason for the fee and the basis for the fee that you imposed makes no sense. In reviewing the video that went with the minutes of the last meeting, I noticed that Public Works Director Webb said that CRNR could take all of our trash directly to the landfill for $8 a month, but recycling raised the cost to $15 a month. And he said, "It's that differential that we're talking about tonight." But the fee was based, not on that differential, it was based on taking the total contract cost and multiplying it by the percent of waste that CRNR claims is diverted from the landfill. That is a very poor public policy. It actually discourages recycling. Savvy residents of Newport Beach would contaminate all their trash so that CRNR cannot divert any of it, because the part that is not diverted is apparently free, the part that is diverted, we have to pay for. Likewise, the recycling fee does not take into account, at least under our current system, how much a particular resident is contributing to the cost of recycling, even if you thought that should be passed on. We allow people to have any number of containers, so somebody who has 20 is paying the same recycling fee under your current policy as one who has only one trash container. There's something unfair about that. So this whole business of what the proper recycling fee should be, whether CRNR is actually making a profit on part of what it takes out of the cans or not, it needs to be rethought. So please reconsider that vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
My name is Long Pham. I'm a resident of Newport Beach since 1988. And this evening, I bring to you, to your attention, an issue that could be resolved very easily, or it could become a litigation item that costing the city unnecessarily. I'm the owner of the mooring, number J412, for over 30 years. And as a mooring owner, I have noticed recently, in the last several years, that the mooring inspection service become a monopoly issue, that only one company serves our mooring. And that makes the company a freedom to raise the price, to reap the reason up by raising the price and adding bogus charge on the invoice, that we have no choice but pay the invoice. As a former county elected official on the Orange County Board of Education, I brought to the attention of the harbor master, that being a government agency, he has the obligation to attract all the service company to do business in Newport Beach, eliminating the monopoly. And I brought into the city a second service company. They went out of their way to invest in time and money. They paid the permit fee over a year ago, but until now, they, they still have not been able to provide a service because some other, some other unknown problem with the city. And... In the meantime, I'm the guy who brought the issue to the city. On April 6th, the harbor department decided to punish me by publicizing, by posting a letter, a formal letter, formal letter that they sent to me, addressed to me personally, in a letter attacking me of being irresponsible, doing nothing on my boat. When they are still subject to discussion on the validity and the truthfulness of the attack on the ladder, I am at loss. I don't understand why the city of Newport Beach Harbor Department have to go out of their way to publicize a letter attacking the individual. You know, there are, right now, there are a number of people, a number of locations in the country, you know, they protest saying Asian hate crime. I lived in the city for over 30 years. I don't believe that there is Asian hate crime here in the city, but the incident that the city publicized the letter attacking me bring up the point. I just want to bring it to your attention, and I love this city. At most, I moved here in 1988, and I hope that you do something to end this situation and bring the, at least we have a second inspection service company in Newport Harbor. Thank you so much for your help. I have a letter here that I would like to submit to City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Pham. Do we have any additional public comment? Do we have any? We have one phone call. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Good day, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Nancy Scarborough. In two weeks, this committee, or this council will be asked to submit and approve the draft for the housing element to HCD. The actual due date is sometime in early 2022. This process began when Diane Dixon was mayor and she formed a housing committee, and it was continued in 2020 when Will O'Neill took over and reformed the committee to focus on meeting the mandate for Rena, which was daunting. I and several other residents have participated in every meeting to date. When we began in 2019, none of us had any education about this or the ramifications of it. We were largely unaware of the impending state laws that would be signed and how they would affect California cities. Since that time, we've all been learning. Like you, we've been seeking knowledge anywhere we could get it and believing that other communities had the same desires and values as Newport Beach. We began to seek out other activist groups who were looking for solutions to some of the same challenges that we were facing. We found many groups grappling with the same challenges, and now we have a greater understanding of the ramifications of the draft that you will be asked to submit. I'm deeply concerned about the direction we're taking with the housing element of our general plan. I'm not sure the full council is aware of the ramifications of the path we are on. With COVID, this has been a challenging learning curve for all of us. However, I think the residents are beginning to take notice, and if we continue this trajectory, the city is in store for devastating outcome. Today, I ask you to pause this process and seek some knowledge yourselves. I believe a study session should be held as soon as possible. There are mixed-income affordable housing experts that can speak to us and give us some additional ideas about how we can meet the state mandate without devastating our precious city. I believe there's a compromise that is challenging to implement, but can be embraced by the residents with some explanations by the city and the activists. I don't believe any of us could have known this was coming before now. We didn't understand it. Yesterday, we submitted a list of suggestions for study session topics. I believe if the full council along with the public are made aware of other approaches, then you can make a more informed decision about this critical component of our general plan. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. No other calls on the phone? Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none? Okay, we'll roll into the public hearings. The first public hearing is for the proposed assessment district number 120, and this area is above the A Restaurant along Santa Ana Avenue between Old Newport Boulevard and Cliff Drive. So this is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on protests or objections to the formation of assessment district number 120, and it's bound between Santa Ana Avenue between Old Newport Boulevard and Cliff Drive, and Cliff Drive between La Jolla Drive and Santa Ana Avenue. All ballots regarding assessment district number 120 must be received by the Assistant City Clerk prior to the closing of this public hearing. Counsel, would you like a staff report?
I think there may be.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, because I've been approached to advise on a small wireless company, I haven't accepted yet or decided if I had, but just to, as a caution, I'm going to lodge a business conflict on this side of me, excuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muldoon. Any interest in a staff report? Seeing none? Before opening the public hearing, I ask that each speaker identify themselves and their property. And first, we'll hear from anyone who wishes to speak against the acquisition of these improvements, the assessment district, the underground utilities district, or the method of spread of the proposed assessments. Do we have any speakers on this? Those would be in against of this assessment district. Seeing none? We'll proceed to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proceedings. Do we have any phone calls? All right. So all written protests and ballots must have been received by the Assistant City Clerk at the time, and at this time, and they must, after this time, there'll be no more written protests or ballots accepted.
And I can accept those right here. If anybody has a ballot they need to turn in, you can just bring it right over here and we'll take it.
Okay. Seeing no one expressing interest in this subject or wanting to vote or be in favor or be opposed, I will close the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
The public is welcome to view the ballot counting in the community room, and the individuals counting the ballots have been deputized to do so.
Thank you. We'll continue with the agenda until the results are tabulated, and we may break in at some point to announce the results or finish the item. Thank you. Okay, our next public hearing is Resolution Number 2021-30, Local Coastal Program Amendment related to short-term lodging on Newport Island. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery and city council members. I'm Simone Georgis, your Community Development Director. With me is Himey Morio, who's a Principal Planner. Tonight, we just want to share with you and talk about recommendations made by the ad hoc committee on short-term lodging. This ad hoc committee was reestablished, and they're only focusing on Newport Island, so these recommendations are coming from them. Just to talk about Newport Island a little bit, it is zoned as an R2 island, so all those properties are R2, so it allows for duplex, but interestingly enough, about 2/3 of the properties, out of the 119 properties there, about 2/3 are single-family dwellings. About 81 single-family dwellings exist, and the other remaining properties are actually duplexes, they're two units. An interesting point for Newport Island that the ad hoc committee has been focusing a lot of attention on is the amount of short-term lodging that exists on the island. About 18 short-term lodging units have been permitted, and that's been actually a large increase in the last few years. It went from three all the way up to 18 at this point. A couple items for Newport Island. It is a very tight island, very narrow streets, and there we have depicted on the graph for you, it's a 20-foot narrow street curb to curb, and that's as thin as they get in Newport. We do have other areas in Newport that have 20-foot narrow streets, but they all lead to wider streets, to a 30-foot wide or a 40-foot wide. And backing up a little bit on the previous slide, if you could see, Newport Island, all the streets are 20-foot, and they're all very narrow, so it causes some parking problems and parking challenges on the island. Here we have some photos for you. We've kind of blocked out their license plate numbers, but this is, these are live photos from Newport Island that we have received. You could see different vehicles parking illegally, really, in the red zone, or even crossing over the sidewalk, or kind of hanging off the, onto the street side. These are either big trucks or big SUVs. You know, some of these homes were not designed to accommodate these kind of large vehicles. We've received, the ad hoc committee has received a large number of complaints from the residents of the island, so has staff, so has code enforcement, so has PD. So these recommendations are really kind of looking to see how we can provide some changes for short-term lodging activity on the island. Continue here. It's important to note that Newport Island does provide some limited coastal access, and you could see there's those coastal access arrows on our street ends. They're not beaches, but they're really street ends, and they do provide some level of access to the coast. There is a public beach park there you see depicted on the screen, so I think this is really information that's going to be relevant, especially because this item, if adopted by the council, will have to go up to the city, to the Coastal Commission. So this item was on your agenda back in February 9th, 2021, and staff asked council to pull the item off the agenda, and the reason why is we received an email from Coastal Commission staff, and that, and the staff stated that they were asking the council to deny this item based on the planning commission's recommendations for denial. So we wanted to kind of pause, and we wanted to have a conversation with the Coastal Commission staff. Coastal Commission staff doesn't, you know, they don't understand Newport Island and the complexities of the island. They felt they could support something, but what that something is, is a little ambiguous, unfortunately. But definitely, we had a conversation with them. We did speak to them about, you know, the number of permits that should be allowed on the island, and originally, our original resolution back in February was to issue no new permits on the island. Coastal staff was not supportive of that. They thought that was restricting coastal access, but they did hint that they'd probably support 20 short-term lodging permits. Currently, there's 18 permits that have been issued. Again, this is not a guarantee that coastal will continue and support these items, but these are some of the comments we heard. Your reso tonight talks about a minimum, three-night minimum stay, and that's consistent with the ordinance that you adopted for the rest of Newport Beach. In the reso this evening, we did speak with coastal staff about an owner occupancy and owner manage, in the sense that an owner would, to continue short, to continue renting as a short-term lodging unit, the owner would have to be present on site, either in the second unit or in, on the primary residence, either through the bedroom. At the time, coastal staff said that they would probably support something like that. For those property owners that don't have owner occupancy, they would have at least one year to modify their business model to get owner occupancy, or they would have to cease operation of their short-term lodging. These items in front of you is what's in your agenda packet. Now, subsequent to publishing the item, staff has spoken further with the Newport Island residents. They were asking that, and the committee is recommending further changes and restrictions, which we'll talk about. And we've also heard even more feedback from Coastal Commission staff, because we reached out to them to talk about some of the changes the residents have suggested. So this is where Coastal Commission, as of right now, this is the feedback they gave us. So your resolution talks about that owner occupancy requirement. They have stated, and they've put in writing, that they're not supportive of owner occupancy. The year previous ordinance for short-term lodging and the reso tonight requires a three-night minimum on Newport Island, they're not going to support a three-night minimum. And they're not really going to support any restrictive parking requirements. So what are they supportive of and what we've heard from them? They would support a 20-permit cap, 20 short-term lodging permits, to address kind of the constant turnover for those rentals that have a lot of turnover of different parties coming through or different families coming through. They said that they would go ahead and support one rental per week, so it could be one group of people, one family, you know, just one rental per week, in a sense that if you check in on a Sunday and you check out on a Wednesday, the owner could not re-rent that unit until the Sunday. Again, one rental per week, they would support something like that. They would, they would support a little bit more restrictive occupancy requirements, so we've talked about this in the past, about two per bedroom plus two. That's not in the ordinance, in the short-term lodging ordinance that you've already adopted. It was really based on the building and fire code. They would support at least one minimum parking space, but they didn't want to be onerous and require more parking and force somebody to lose their permit. So that's, that's really talking about what they would support and what they would not support. The ad hoc committee is asking the council to do a couple things, to a few items here. For the reso, we have owner occupancy. Let's go ahead, and the recommendation is to eliminate that and add instead that one rental per week, and we're asking the council if you would support that change. In addition, to go ahead and support an overnight occupancy of two people per bedroom plus two, up to a maximum of 10 people. And then add in, even though coastal wasn't supportive, and that was their feedback, but go ahead and add in more tougher parking restrictions on Newport Island. So if you don't provide parking, you don't get a short-term lodging permit, and we did verify all the units, existing units do have at least one space. And if you have one parking space only, your maximum occupant load should be five persons, and if you have two spaces, your maximum occupant load would be the five plus the five, which is 10 persons. In addition, the ad hoc committee is asking the council if you would support not just an overnight occupancy, but a daytime occupancy, and that daytime is going to be what your overnight is, which is 10 max, plus six persons. So in a sense, it will never exceed 16 max, so for a, for a three-bedroom, I'm sorry, four-bedroom, it'd be a 10 max. So whatever your bedroom count is, it'll be that plus six, and that'll give you your kind of your daytime maximum occupancy. And that really concludes the presentation this evening. You'd find the items exempt from CEQA, either adopt or amend the resolution. And I'll put these items back on the screen for council's consideration and happy to answer questions.
Do we have any? Okay, so we'll go out to the public.
My name is Norton Younglove. I have been a resident of Newport Beach and Riverside for all but two of my 91 years. Those two years were spent in the United States Army. I have, as I just indicated, lifelong interest in and enjoyment of Newport Harbor and yacht racing bases. I've enjoyed representing our city, sailing a snipe, basically. I started in a snowbird when I was about six. I was very proud of finishing ninth in the fly the snowbirds when I was seven, I believe I was, and I congratulate Mr. Duffield in his recent success. It's not that easy winning a race. We oppose the restraints to short-term because it makes it possible for us to enjoy our own duplex. The upstairs is a permanent rental, the downstairs is us plus short-term rentals. Their money goes to maintain the quality of the building. Recently, for example, built over $1,000 on Duffy, $2,000 on Hot Tub, and $18,000 totally redoing a bedroom. That money is spent in Newport Beach, supporting local merchants and suppliers. In like manner, when we come down, our gasoline is bought here, our groceries are purchased here, or we eat at one of the local residents, and I think that's probably true of most of our short-term renters. I am not aware of any information indicates they are any more of a problem than the people that occupy a hotel room, which are also short-term renters, or long-term renters, or property owners. I know our clients have not been a problem to the city or the county. We would like to continue enjoying Newport. We would like to continue enjoying Newport Beach, but if you cross that narrow body of water to where our residence is, from Newport Island, we would have to make the very uncomfortable decision of either living there and having no renters, or having renters and not being able to live there. Well, we enjoy the combination, and it helps the local economy, quite obviously, bringing money into not only the tax or fee that you all have on it, but the people that manage it. It, I think, is an undue interference in the private property owner rights. And I would hope that you would stand with the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. If you had a chance to read my written comments, you know I have concern about the process of this. Some people are frustrated with government having to move slowly, but that is actually intentional in our system of government. I think it was former councilman and mayor Keith Curry, who, when people were frustrated with the slowness of what councils could do, reminded them that the product of government is not, they're not manufacturing something, their product is the process. So I have a problem with a state regulation about how long a proposed amendment has to be available before you act on it. I have a problem with our own council policy that we don't seem to be following. The amendment to a local coastal program is proposed locally, but the program affects everybody in California. So the state law requires that a proposed amendment be available for inspection at least six weeks before you advance that to the Coastal Commission for their review and possible approval. In this case, a copy of a proposed amendment was posted back in November. That was reviewed by our planning commission in December. But on April 8th, when the agenda for this meeting was posted, we learned that's not the proposal that you are considering tonight. And then we learned today that what was posted last Thursday is even that is not the proposal that you are considering tonight. That's hardly six weeks of public review of that. And then, secondly, you have yourself a council policy K1 that requires any amendment to the coastal program to come to you with a recommendation about that proposal from the planning commission. You have a recommendation on what was proposed back in November. You have no recommendation about, from them, about what was proposed on, was posted on April 8th, and you certainly have no recommendation about what's up here on this slide. And in fact, we have a resolution that apparently is not the resolution, and the public is just taking on faith, somebody is going to correct it, and it will actually do what it says up there. So this process is highly flawed, and I think we need to slow down and remember that the product of government is the process, and we need to follow it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have other public comment on this item.
Counsel, mayor, my name is Chuck Gaetan. I live on Newport Island. I have a duplex. This is different than what I thought I was coming to talk about, to be very honest with you. It's okay. There's a lot of questions I would have, but if I could, let me just begin with what I was going to start with. I produce large-scale concerts, opening, closing ceremonies to World Cup yachting, World Cup soccer, Paralympics. Half of my time is spent solving problems. And the first thing we have to accept is the problem. Could I have slide one, please? And...
All right.
The first thing I'm going to show you some slides of, there's some nice cars, no parking to be found on that street. I would put them in the garage if they were mine, but that's not my point. Next slide, please. Still, no parking, different day, obviously nicer day, no parking. Next slide, please. Right outside Newport Island, around it, still, no parking on any of this. My point is, I took these pictures during the last ban of short-term rentals. So for everybody to blame 18 households on a parking issue, when these pictures show that there's a parking problem with no short-term rentals. So my point is, we've identified the problem, we haven't identified the cause. And I have offered to meet with anybody, neighbors, anybody who will meet with me and discuss it, and I hear about these ad hoc committees. I was never invited, I guess because I own one of the properties that is the short-term rental. But I think, last gentleman's point is good, I think we need to really solve the problem. And anybody who's blocking the streets like the slides you showed, toe them, I don't want them there. I have a policy with my rental company. If you get a citation, your lease is terminated, your short-term rental is terminated, you leave, goodbye. And I have no problem that everybody does that policy. It's not perfect. The citation thing is, a local resident can get a citation, he pays a little fee. I get a citation with my short-term rentals, it's $1,000, I only get three of them, my business is shut down. Doesn't seem quite fair. Next slide, please. That's my car hanging over the sidewalk a little. In the past, last two or three years, nobody said anything about it. Now, because of this kind of Hatfield McCoy atmosphere that has been created, and I maybe has contributed partly to it too, but we've got to stop this whole "them" us and figure out this problem. So when this happens, I have people who call and complain. Next slide, please. But when somebody like the car on the right does it there who's a permanent residence, nobody complains. So I think we need to become a little bit better citizens. Next slide, please. And there, you know, I don't know, he probably wasn't there that long. I'm not going to complain about that. That's ridiculous. Last slide, please, and I will quit. This is my house. For 48 hours every single week, everybody on my street puts their trash cans against my house. Do you think I like it? No. Is it blocking the sidewalk? Yes. But you know what, folks? We live on an island, and sometimes we go along to get along. And that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the ballots back on the undergrounding assessment. This might be a good time to take a quick break and finish with that.
Great, yes. Okay.
And I think the process would be to kind of reopen item number 15, and then we'll come back to item number 16.
Okay, so we're going back to item number 15. Okay, so the results are ready, and this is relative to the proposed assessment on District Number 120, item 15, along the area of Santa Ana Avenue between Old Newport Boulevard and Cliff Drive. Madam Clerk.
Honorable mayor and council members, the results for assessment District Number 120 are as follows. Based on the tabulations for the ballots received, 87.22% of the ballots were in favor of the assessment district for a total assessment of $1,112,246.62. 12.78% of the votes were submitted in opposition for a total assessment of $162,961.66. Based on the ballot tabulation, it is appropriate for the city council, if it is your desire, to proceed with the formation of assessment District Number 120 by adopting the resolution confirming the assessment. The resolution is the formal action declaring the results of the ballot procedure, ordering the acquisition of the improvements, making determinations, confirming the assessments, and approving the assessment engineer's final report.
Thank you.
And that'd be item B on the agenda, so it'd be a motion to move staffer, recommendation item B, if you want to go that route.
Okay, Mr. O'Neil.
I'd like to move staff recommendation item B.
A second from Stixson.
With Mayor Protem Muldoon recusing himself, the motion carried. Five-one. Six-zero, excuse me.
Okay, so we're moving back to item 16, and we were in public comment. Do we have more public comment on this? Please come forward. Mr. Batley.
I really have no opinion, one way or the other. I do know that Newport Island is very congested, no parking and all that. I personally don't have any short-term lodging management properties on that island for that reason. I'd like to point out just a couple other things. Recently, we just passed Phase One, Phase Two ordinances, and we have barely enough time to even get them, let them working or anything. And I don't know what to do, carve out for Newport Island is necessarily fair, although I do agree with the sentiments of Newport Island. And quite frankly, I don't think Newport Island is the place to have vacation rentals. But just for the record, you know, when Expedia wrote, "Abandoning vacation rentals outright unfairly punishes responsible operators and travelers as not the solution to noise and nuisance problems." I might point out, we don't really have a short-term lodging vacation problem, we have an operator problem. And I thought that's why you passed Phase One, Phase Two, so you can kind of get rid of the bad operators. If we had no bad operators, we'd have no bad vacation people staying. So I'd like to maybe suggest that maybe the council pause a little bit based on the comments earlier. And the other thing I might want to point out, any operator on a short-term lodging vacation rental, you have a proprietor-guest relationship like you do a hotel. They have no rights. If they violate their contract, they can be evicted immediately. So if, in fact, you had operators that would follow up on these kinds of things, and if there was a problem, hey, you go down there and ask them to leave. And they do. And if they don't, you call the police. So there are other things that we can do to address this problem. And I don't really think it's a, a short-term lodging vacation problem, I think it's an operator problem. I wish the city would concentrate a little bit more on that.
Thank you. Do we have other public comment on this item?
Good evening. How's everybody tonight? My name's Gary Cruz. I'm from Newport Island, and I'm going to address a few points. I think the issues I've sent via email and past presentations, I'm not going to rehash them, I'll save you that. I'm only going to bring up a few points. One of them is, which is, which is, we've heard, which is that having an STR is a property right. And I have a hard time getting behind that when I'm well aware that R1 zones are banned. STRs are not banned, so I don't really follow how the property rights of an R1 zone are less than those in an R2 zone. Whatever the reasons that they were banned in R1 zones apply to Newport Island. Newport Island is a de facto R1 zone. And I also kind of take a step back when I hear people say that I can do anything I want with my property, and I really don't want that person in my neighborhood, and I don't think you do either. So Newport Island, there were some numbers put up earlier, and they were impressive numbers, but my numbers are a little bit different and possibly even more impressive in that I find 90% of the homes on Newport Island are single-family residences or two units where the owners live there, such as I do. Realistically, the $100,000 two-unit places are coming down rapidly, and they're being brought in with two- to $5 million houses. That's been the case, and it's going to be the case for a lot more years to come. And just imagine what the homeowner thinks, if they spend $5 million on a house to find out there's 18 short-term rental properties on the island. Also imagine what they will say when they said, "Well, you had a chance to rectify this in 2021, and you didn't do anything about it." And imagine the firepower that those homeowners are going to bring to the next debate. So code enforcement, yes, we, you know, we've been told it's all just a question of code enforcement, but we haven't found that works. Fact of the matter is, most of the bad operators have known that this is on the agenda, they know they're in the crosshairs, but they can, bad operators continue to operate badly. It hasn't worked. And unfortunately, residents are being put on the spot to make those complaints, and we're causing issues with our neighbors. It was mentioned that, well, why don't the residents get tickets? The residents are getting tickets. There's collateral damage, and they're not too keen about that. Practicality of an STR, imagine an STR can turn over as many 100 times in a year. That's an exaggeration, but not much. Imagine having a new tenant once a week, maybe twice a week. That's tough on a people, people living next door. What we're asking for is really just an opportunity to present our case to the Coastal Commission. That's all we're really asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Please come forward.
Thank you for your time tonight. I'm Meg Cooper, and I am a responsible short-term rental owner on Newport Island. I apologize, because I also was prepared for what was in the mailer, so I am just going to say my couple points real quickly, but I appreciate what you've attributed. I'd like, I love that. That seems reasonable to me. What was in the blue paper did not seem incredibly reasonable to me. So I would like to explain my strong opposition to the proposed changes, namely, the short-term rentals must be owner-occupied and owner-managed. Let me just briefly explain my situation. I do live in an owner-occupied unit on Newport Island. So you may be thinking, well, what's the big deal then, right? It's no concern for me. Well, my plan was to stay in my beautiful two-bedroom, two-back unit home with my partner as long as we possibly could. But since we made that decision, things have changed very dramatically in my neighborhood. My unit and the only entrance and exit to my home backs up to a very violent and dangerous man. A man that many here are well aware of, many on the council as well. After one of his more recent arrests that occurred in the alley between my house and his, he violently came after me in the alley, threatening my life and that of my same-sex partner. He has come after me multiple times since, on recommendation of the Newport Beach Police Department. Thank you, guys. I have been working with them closely, I invested in security cameras, I was granted a restraining order by a county judge in less than 30 minutes on Zoom court. So in 30 minutes, she saw that he was a clear and convincing danger to my safety and that of my family. I'm trying to convince this to you in three minutes or less. So now, I keep my doors locked at all times, my windows closed, and every time I walk at the door, I'm walloped by fear. This is absolutely no way to live. We thought that restraining order might quell him a little bit, it hasn't at all, it's only emboldened him. So a few months ago, my partner and I made the difficult decision, we're going to move. Because we live in fear every single day. Now, I understand this is an extreme case, it totally is, but this is my reality. And the thought of forcing citizens where they must live, ideal or unideal, is not only unsafe, it's a complete government overstep. Now, I agree, there should be responsible short-term rental regulations, and like I said, I own one, I've never had a complaint. But this is not a reasonable recommendation. Those ones that you had on the screen, I would be more... Those ones that you had on the screen, I would be more than happy to serve on your ad hoc committee. Those look amazing. This, this one could potentially help some people live a quieter life on Newport Island, but at the same time, absolutely puts my life, my life in jeopardy, right? So then a yes vote on this would hold more risk than reward. And it should be viewed in that weighted capacity, in my opinion. And quickly onto the second point of requiring owner-managed units, and to get this a little bit lighter, I hope. I would love to hear the rationale on this one. I'm an HR executive. I have a $1 billion medical device company here locally, as well as serve on two boards. Two seconds. I am completely busy. And I would not do any good to my neighbors if I had to manage my own short-term rental. I hired the best company to do so. And I just, I, it doesn't make sense to me. It just seems like another ruse to get rid of short-term rentals altogether. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please, come on down.
Good evening. Mark Marcos, Newport Island. First of all, Meg does a great job, and I'm very sorry for the situation that's occurred with our, with our neighbor. It's, it's very traumatic, actually. You heard from so many of our residents on everything that's going on with the island. It's not just parking, it's congestion, it's noise, it's nuisance, it just continues. And, and it is very difficult for the people that live there and their families, and the people that work and live and go to, go to work every morning. There's a total disruption here. And there are bad operators, and we haven't found the solution. So I came here to talk about the owner-occupied. We had a petition that went out, and over a hundred homeowners signed it for owner-occupied. Basically, what that means is they want change. They want to find a solution to the situation. It's a tight island, there's so much going on. And if we had everybody like Meg, we would be in good shape. But we don't have that. We have operators that, that are rogue. And, and that disrupts, you know, when the problem happens, the damage is already done. Six, eight households are already disrupted. Kids are woken up in the middle of the night. It's, it's very difficult. So we're, we're looking to you to find a solution. We don't know exactly what that is. Maybe it's the one they're proposing here, but we need that, and we're looking for your vote. So thank you. We just want to get our island back to where it was and what it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment further, please come down.
Council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Gina Unsworth. I live on Newport Island as well. I've heard some of the stories from people tonight, and I'm sorry I don't understand all the references everybody's made. Maybe I'm the only person in the room who doesn't know who Hatfield McCoy is. So totally lost on me. However, and the lady who just spoke, Ms. Cooper, terrible situation. But what I'd like to say to you is, think of that situation for an eighty-five-year-old lady or a gentleman who is in his eighties, who's just had a triple bypass, and that's how he's living in his house or her house, absolutely terrified by who's going to be the neighbor. It's not going to be a neighbor they can rely on to come and help them if something happens, but it's somebody that is absolutely terrified of finding out who they are. So terrified that some of these people on the island won't call the police, because great job that they do as the police, the fact that a car's parked near the house or they come to the door lets the, the people who've been renting know what the issue is and where it's come from. So they're terrified. One neighbor, and again, I'd like to pull Ms. Cooper's story, you know, she feels safe in her house. One neighbor had somebody, while he's having his dinner, and he's had a triple bypass, I'd like to just add that again, come over, the dog came into the house, and the renter came and followed it to get it. Now surely that's a violation of somebody's privacy. Now, you can't guarantee, even with your ordinances that go through, that the clientele are going to be great. You can't guarantee it. So I just want you to be aware that whatever ordinances you put in, you've got to be prepared that you can't make those guarantees for people. And so we do need some restrictions, and we do need help from the city council to take it to the Coastal Commission. My intent is not to stop anybody making a living. Everybody is entitled to that. But there are other ways to make a living from it just being a short-term rental. And so everybody should be considered, particularly a gentleman whose family have owned on the island over fifty years, who is living as a prisoner in his own home. And he knows I was going to speak about, about that. You know, and I think we just need to consider the weaker people on the island who can't look after themselves, who have been homeowners, who have been good citizens, and how do we look after them? And how do we look after the good operators by removing the bad ones? And how do we be fair to the tourists? I read reviews where they have to park at Vons because they can't find parking. Parking is only one issue. Urination in the streets, vomit, finding underwear, all these are the daily realities that you're putting citizens and residents of Newport Island through on a daily basis. And I don't want to sugarcoat that. The language you hear is terrible. I shouldn't have to go out at seven-thirty at night and watch somebody urinate in public. That's something I should see in a third-world country, not a first-class beach resort that Newport Island is. I thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wish to speak? This is the time.
Hello, council members. I appreciate the, you all taking all the time that you've done to get where we're at in this entire process, from when we started a couple of years ago to where we're at now. There has been a lot of changes. But the problem is, the, the changes are mostly, it's impacted, still impacts the neighborhood. So we have, we have more ordinances, we have more enforcement, we have different things. But what hasn't changed is we still have an island that, that three years ago, or even two years ago, had two or three permits. So everybody already lived there, and all the disruption came to the island and continues to come to the island. The bad operators are still the bad operators. The ones I met with you guys two years ago, they're still operating next door. The ones still operating next door to me, and, and some of the other ones. It's, it's, it's not just the operator, it's, it's the whole disruption of the neighborhood, the volume of cars, the volume of people. None of the houses on the water, I don't know about the inner houses. None of us have walls any taller than this. So when you go outside to enjoy yourself, and like this weekend, there was a party, they had, it's a two-bedroom place that they have the four bedrooms that aren't, isn't permitted. Why, I still don't know why it's still operating. But basically, that house had, you know, ten people over there because they can, because they lied on their permit or they didn't have their, the four bedrooms. So they're over there, then across from me, they had a bachelorette party across there. So that, that noise was going on. We had Jacuzzis. I called the STR line Thursday night, and I called three times, and it sent me to voicemail each time. And then finally, somebody from code enforcement called me. So the STR line did not work. But I did email the S, the code enforcement, so they did handle the situation. So the other thing, too, is everybody claims they're a great operator, but every, every operator that's been up here that I, that I saw speak so far, everyone, but one of them has been cited at least once for something. And then, and then one of them has had problems, it's just didn't get a citation for it. The police over there, and they had a bunch of angry neighbors about it. So nobody's perfect on the island. I haven't seen, you know, as far as it goes, and it impacts everybody super negatively. I'm very confused about what we're doing with that. Are we still, are you still voting on the, on the owner-occupied? Because that's what I thought we were doing. Thank you. I appreciate everything that everybody's doing here, by the way, even though you got to take that stance of making something happen. Everybody's been so great to work with in the city, and I really, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other speakers? Okay, seeing none in the community room, seeing none in the chambers. Do we have anybody on the phone? Okay, one on the phone. Oh, there we go. Please mute your device and go ahead. Sorry. Hello, please go ahead. Please mute your device.
Is, is that person at the podium going to speak?
Just go ahead, please.
This is Bud Reeveley on Newport Island. I just wondered what's going on tonight, because I feel like there's now new bait-and-switch proposals here because of the Coastal Commission has, again, for the second time, interfered with the public access and public operation. They, they, they seem to throw the monkey wrench in every time we turn around and try to get something done. I am very much opposed to this new proposals you're making. We have to go back to whatever is owner-occupied or home stay or whatever you want to call it. That's the only solution that we'll ever accept on Newport Island. It's got to go that way, or it's not going to go at all. You guys are spending a lot of time and a lot of money trying to monitor this, and you're not making enough money to pay for all of it. So if you do the home stay, you won't be having these problems because the people who are in the house are going to have to take care of their own issues. So I, I strongly suggest that we stay with the same program we were, pass the motions that you had intended tonight, and forget all this other that was, to all of our surprise, came up at the last minute. And this is not fair to us. We work hard every day to try to get our points across, and we expect you to follow through in what you say you're going to do. So I appreciate your help. I know it's difficult, and it's, it's unpopular, I'm sure, for some people. But we have to have some help here. I've been here twenty-five years, and this, this situation has really spoiled my life. And I hate it. So I want something done. Thank you.
Thank you. And, sir, my apologies, please go ahead.
No problem. Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I live on Newport Island, and I live near the intersection of Thirty-Eighth Street and Channel Place. That's at the eastern tip of the island. At that point of the island, there are six short-term rentals there. It's quite a concentration. It's not the only place where there's a concentration on the island, but that's, that's my neighborhood, right at that end there. And we have a couple of the very notorious operators there who have given us grief on a regular basis ever since this has been going on. And I'd like to add my voice to others on the island, the many people that have signed the petition, the many people that have expressed their thoughts to the council, that this is something that really needs to be taken care of. And I think that this resolution, this agenda item, should be voted on in favor of owner-operated, owner-occupied properties as the only way to get a handle on the rowdiness, the, the dissension among people, the wake nights, awakened nights, and the grief that we've suffered as a consequence of this. We can't look anymore. Yes, you, you put in, you've implemented certain things in terms of trying to get a handle on, on this. But if it starts at the home where the short-term rental person is occupying it, and that's, and the owner is there, that can be nip this whole thing in the bud. I think it will create good operators for short-term rentals that way, and we don't have to worry about the, the implementation of all these other items because it will take care of itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the room wishes to speak on this item? Okay, no other calls? All right. Let's go to our council, Ms. Stixson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, well, first I want to just express my appreciation to our residents who have been communicating, public, hearing of public comments, attending our meetings, communicating with us on a regular basis, on a daily basis. And the purpose of their elected representatives is to listen to them. And we, I have been listening to you, and we have been trying to work to get this system right. And we're still working on it. And we know that we passed some ordinances several months ago during a COVID period. And so short-term rentals, high season is just about ready to begin. So we hope that what we have put in place will work for the rest of the city. I will say, it's an important point for anyone who suggests that they cannot rent short-term rentals. We have, at the current moment, fourteen, 1,453 active short-term rental permits operating today in Newport Beach. This number is three times greater than any other coastal city in California. And I think it's greater than any city in California, for that matter. So we, I am supportive of short-term rentals, renting property for short-term purposes, especially longer-term purposes, long-term rentals, which, incidentally, are a property right. No one is touching any area, suggesting any regulation of long-term rentals. You may rent your home, and, and a single-family residence, anywhere in the city. You may do so. Short-term rentals is a phenomenon that all cities are dealing with across the world. Paris, France has problems with Airbnb and other short-term rental online platform companies. Seven, eight years ago, we had fewer than 600 short-term rental permits. So really, no one thought it was a problem. We did not need to regulate until it became a problem with 1,500. And now the number of active has declined a little bit because of COVID, I guess. But the most we've ever had is over 1,550 approximately. So we have been working hard to keep our neighborhoods safe and protect the quality of life of all of our residents. And many comparisons are offered about hotels. Hotels in our community are required under their conditional use permits to have security management plans, and if, and they have onsite enforcement. So there's very little maintenance from a code enforcement standpoint that the city needs to do with a commercial hotel. And they are in designated areas, commercial areas, obviously. We have, as other cities have, experienced many hotels planting themselves inside our neighborhoods. Many, many cities, and I've got a stack of examples here of cities approved by the Coastal Commission, incidentally, on many different provisions, that cities that prohibit short-term rentals. Laguna, Huntington Beach does not even allow short-term rentals unless they're owner-occupied. They just, they just permitted them in the last few months. So we are far and away welcoming to visitors to our city. We have over 4,000 hotel rooms and 1,453 short-term rental permits. So we are doing our part to be generous and welcoming to our visitors. The issue is unique with Newport Island, and that's why I've been, and of course, that's in my district, so I've been particularly attentive and concerned and care for the residents and care for all of them. The reason, let me just explain, and I'll have Simone maybe bring you up to the podium, Simone, if you would, Mr. Juerges, come and explain why the change in what was in the publicized agenda and what has happened. Because the good news is, well, good news, bad news, we, we are required to work with the Coastal Commission, obviously. What we do here is not the final word, it goes to the Coastal Commission. To get a signal from the Coastal Commission, albeit sometimes it changes, we have to, we need, we don't have, we don't have to, but we probably are smart if we listen to the Coastal Commission because that is really is going to be the final arbiter of what is decided. So, Mr. Juerges, if you would explain what happened from the original staff report and resolution and where we are now.
Certainly, thank you, Councilmember Dixon. So the resolution has not been changed. So on, for tonight's item in front of the council is the owner occupancy. What we did at, at the staff level is we reached out to the California Coastal Commission staff to get their input on any additional changes we were suggesting to make to the resolution. The, the staff did talk to their deputy director, and they provided some feedback to us, and they said that they're they said that they're not going to support the owner occupancy. So if council adopts it this evening to send it up to the Coastal Commission, there's probably a 99.9 chance they're not going to support the owner occupancy. So hence, we are asking the council if they want to go ahead and amend tonight's reso and instead of the owner occupancy, just restrict it to one rental per week. And I know that may disappoint some of the residents, but again, it's, we're trying to be successful with our changes, and we have to be successful at the Coastal Commission level. There's no guarantee either way. We will definitely be advocating for the residents and for the changes the council makes at the Coastal Commission level, but it's good to know what they're thinking today. And they're stating that they're not going to support the owner occupancy, but they are going to support a cap of 20, so, so far, so good. They are going to support the overnight occupancy of two per bedroom plus two. They're not really going to support a very restrictive parking requirement. So if the council wants to adopt a parking restriction, they're probably going to look at it as you need one parking space per unit. They don't want to take away any short-term lodging permit from any operator, and they probably will support some type of daytime occupancy. Again, this is an early look from the coastal staff. I think it's important that the council knows so they can make the proper decision.
Thank you. Can I ask a question on the owner occupancy, on the items? And I'll just say I support all of these items to be added into the resolution, but the one that is would be the either/or. The owner occupancy, could we, if the council agreed, if we were to agree with the one rental per week, additionally add the owner occupancy requirement and expect to negotiate this at the coastal level? I mean, just to keep it there, so the people very much, the residents very much, want to speak to the Coastal Commission. They want their day before the commission. And to be able to speak to this point, owner occupancy, just as they've had in their letters and their appearances and their comments tonight, they want to talk about the value of owner occupancy. And I do think, based on the correspondence we've heard, my opinion from the Coastal Commission is, I don't think they truly understand the unique geographic proximity issues, narrow streets, parking issues on Newport Island. And we've talked about even having a meeting with Coastal Commission, so they better understand the particular nuances. We in Newport Beach want to work with the Coastal Commission. We want to be constructive, but we also want to, we listen to our residents, and we want to be responsive to our residents. So I will say, I will make a motion to support the proposed, the existing resolution, but make that additional amendment or change to add the owner occupancy requirement so that we have that to talk to at the Coastal Commission level. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Dixon, is your motion to add the changes that we shared on the screen?
Correct.
Those changes and to keep the owner occupancy?
Yes. Yes, please, thank you. That would be in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I will, will end up seconding that motion, but I just wanted to make an important distinction here because we keep talking about the Coastal Commission, and we're actually talking about Coastal Commission staff. And that's a huge distinction because when this item actually goes to the Coastal Commission and residents are allowed to speak to the commissioners, they can make their case there. And it's important that we try to work with staff and that we try to get them on our side, but it's also important that when we go to the Coastal Commission, the residents are dealing with the actual commissioners and that they are the ones that really need to understand the specifics of our situation here. So that's something that I think we really need to understand, and that our citizens will have the opportunity to make their case to the Coastal Commission. I agree that these changes would be really beneficial. The owner occupancy, I think, is going to be decided at the commission level. It sounds to me like there is enough, there's enough difference of opinion on that, that that will eventually be decided at the commission level. But the rest of this is going to make things much better for the people of Newport Island. And I'm also wondering if we could have an appeal process for specific circumstances where, I mean, I think Ms. Cooper's situation is so onerous and so egregious that, you know, if we had that before a hearing officer or something, we could make exceptions on particular cases where it's just, you know, totally out of hand. So I don't know if that's something that we need to talk about right now, but I do think it's something that in the future we might need to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blum.
So I just have a couple of questions really quickly. How many of the 18 units do we have code violations for in the last year, roughly?
So, thank you, Councilmember Blum. So our new ordinance went to effect in August 2020, so since that time, there are two properties that have received two citations each, so those two properties will be up for a suspension hearing.
Okay. Have any of the owner occupied received code violations in that same period?
Let us look into that.
Thank you. And so I guess the hardest part I have with this is that we're piecemealing out 18 units, and as we've talked about up and down this line, we have 1,400 in Newport. And as this has kind of gone through this process and what we're going to be putting forth to Coastal, I don't want to say it seems kind of like a piecemeal project, but it seems like it's ripe for denial. And in any business venture, I don't think we like to be ripe for denial. I think we like to be ripe for approval. We like to have a better stance in what it is we're actually asking for. So are we putting our best foot forward right now? Is this the best way to solve a problem? Or are we kicking the can two years down the line to find no solution when we see denial over the longer bureaucracy? Thank you, Mr. Moser, that this process is. And so I always come back, are we just trying to get something on the board to not see it approved just to quell an issue that won't quell it? We all want to see a solution, you know? We understand the stress of the residents. We understand the financial obligations of the short-term rentals. We see the growth in it. I mean, I understand 18 on a small island of, I think we're 140, somewhere around there, is still a lot. But I just have a hard time, and we've had three council members and a huge amount of city staff on an ad hoc committee on 18 units. So if this isn't a broader use of our resources to kind of figure out a generalized problem, are we going to start piecemealing these all around the city anytime we have an issue? I want to see a great solution. I want to see residents happy, but at the end of the day, you know, I don't want to throw things against the wall and see what sticks. I want a plan, and I want a good plan that we think we can pass at Coastal. And so, I mean, that's really the stance, and, you know, I don't have a dog in the fight. I was on Newport Island on Saturday, beautiful. I really enjoyed it. You know, I understand the parking issues. I also have a place on the peninsula, and we drive around a lot, you know? It's part of the deal down there. But in the same regard, you know, Coastal Commission isn't about what Newport likes. And I think that's the fear I have sending something up, is that are we all of a sudden going to be the elitists that are trying to throw at the accessibility on this one island? And that might not put us in the best light for other options we want to put forth with Coastal in the future about regulating this exact same issue. I want to see strength in our opinions up here, and I want to see the best possible thing we can put forth. This just doesn't feel like it to me, and, you know, I very well may be wrong, but I want a solution. I just, I see a lot of, a lot of different pieces to this on-dias resolutions and adjustments now. I think maybe we can come back with something a little stronger with a little more input. My personal opinion on that.
Councilmember Blum. I'll just answer your question.
Please.
No, those two units are not owner occupied.
They are not. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
So without getting into the substance of whether it's fair to take away the short-term lodging permit from someone like Ms. Cooper, I would say that Mr. Moser's points are well taken on the process side of things. And so, at best, I'll abstain on this. Thanks.
Right. Do we have any other comments?
So, Mr. Juerges, the reason for these additional items on page 10, about add, add, you've, nothing in life is a certainty, but you have heard from the Coastal Commission's staff that they would be amenable to these items. Is that correct?
We have heard from the Coastal Commission's staff. They're amenable to the items except for the overly restrictive parking. And when I say overly restrictive is, you know, your occupancy is limited based on the number of parking spaces. I think, I don't think they're going to be supporting that. But again, this is, this isn't recommendations from the ad hoc committee.
But we could make the argument. I mean, I anticipate when we put our case together. And also, just to clarify for Mr. Blum, we're not eliminating the 18. They're going to be continued. I mean, we're no one, unless they have their permit revoked for noncompliance, they will continue to be operating, the 18 plus two more. So, Mr. Blum, you're absolutely correct. I mean, I don't even know anymore what the perfect solution is. If you look at the 25-page document of Coastal Commission decisions on short-term rentals over the last five years, there's really no consistency. Every city has unique issues, characteristics, demands, and the Coastal Commission has been all over, been all over the spectrum on how they're regulating. Laguna's different from Huntington Beach and Santa Monica. Every different city puts their, puts their issues, and it's kind of like a roll of the dice. I think, I believe, with these proposed additions to our resolution, including the owner occupancy item, I think we are listening, we are indicating we're listening to Coastal, and so at least we're listening, and we'll be able to make our case and explain the parking issue perhaps. But they came forward, actually, the one rental per week was their idea. I think that is a unique idea, and frankly, if it works, I think frankly, it can go a long way with bringing peace and quiet to Newport Island. So again, I support this motion strongly and hope it can send a message to the Coastal Commission that the city of Newport Beach wants to work with them to find a solution that we could all live with and bring peace and quiet to our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you. I'm in favor of these actions and hoping that they'll have some, some results, good results. Not to bela, I wasn't going to bring this up, but this is my little Ogden Valley News newspaper, my favorite newspaper. I read it every week. It's in Utah. It's 900 miles away, and they're having the exact same problems that we have here. I would read you, I could bore you with the words, they're the same words that you are hearing, 800 miles away. And I have a home there, and I've experienced firsthand the inconvenience of a renter next door to me. And it was something, unless it happens to you, you have no idea how bad it is. And so I wish there was more we could do. I feel awful that we can't, we can't do the things it takes to do these things. And, you know, these statistics, you're making these homeowners suddenly become tattletales. And I agree with the one speaker out there who said, I don't want to, I don't want, they'll know exactly who called, and then, once the policeman leaves, now what do I do? Now I'm locked in my home, scared. So they don't call, unless you're a strong and able body like Scott is out there, he can do it. Others can't. So lots of people probably don't call, so your statistics are off. And I do know that a lot of times, from what I've heard with the homeowners, that these, that we don't cite people. We come there and give warnings. So what kind of a statistic is that? It's a warning, and there's hundreds of warnings, I guess, are given. So I am especially impressed with this ad hoc committee and what they've had to go through and such, and nobody wants to take anybody's property rights away. And the idea that where you can't rent your home, you can rent your home. No one's saying you can't rent your home. Go ahead and rent it, you know? That's, all across the city, we're not saying you cannot rent your house, but we are saying if you rent it for one night to a party, that's probably not going to be what we're after. And it's, if it hadn't been for this internet, we wouldn't have this problem. It's, before the internet, you couldn't walk up to some residence and punch in a little code from your phone, right? And then suddenly open the door with nobody, the owner's not there, the agent's not there, you're there, and you're just walking in. It's a whole new world that we have this opportunity, and in some cases, it's great. And in other places like Newport Island, it's not so great. So, thank you.
Any more council comments?
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay.
And Mayor Avery?
Yes.
If I may just kind of recap, Councilmembers Dixon's motions.
Right.
Just for the councilmember's benefit. So what we heard this evening is to look at for the amendment to one rental per week, but that's going to be owner occupied, a cap of 20 short-term lodging permits, a overnight occupancy or occupant load of two people per bedroom plus two with a maximum of 10 occupants, the parking restrictions that I shared on the screen earlier that will be tied to the occupant load, and then a daytime occupant load of whatever your overnight occupant load is plus six persons. And if Councilmember Dixon, if that, those are the items. Okay.
Okay. You know, I'd like to just say that, you know, this has been, it's been difficult for a reason because it's hard, right? And, you know, when this all started, it seemed reasonable because we assume people are reasonable, and if you rent a home in a neighborhood, that you would respect your neighbors and, you know, you would just be good neighbors. And what we're finding is quite a few people are not good neighbors. The majority are. You know, I think the majority of short-term rental folks are fine, and, but there's more than just a few who, you know, are renting those units to let off steam, or they just don't respect their neighbors. And, you know, it's sort of, you can kind of understand it because when people rent, to me, a short-term rental, it could be a big family, and a big family's boisterous and noisy, and there's nothing wrong with that, you know? If they've got 10 or 16 family members, if, you know, six persons plus 10, and you're going to get that, and that, that's really not objectionable in, you know, in terms of police action or a citation, just a family out front, you know? Parents have had a few glasses of wine, and the kids are running around, and they're going late because it's been late out in the evenings, and it's 10 o'clock and warm outside. But if you're the neighbor next door and you're 75 years old, it's probably not a good thing. So, you know, these are, these are the problems that we're having, and it's happening in all different communities. It's happening, there's all kinds of stories in papers about it. And I think, I think it is manageable most of the time, and I think it's a combination, you know? Three things have to work. The owners have to be really strong managers, or the agents that they hire have to be strong managers, and we've got those people in this town that are strong managers. The city, not just us, but any city, needs to have a robust response to complaints, and they have to, we have to, we clearly have not invested enough, in my view, to dealing with this issue to kind of keep the peace in neighborhoods and remind people of their responsibilities, and if necessary, issue a citation. And then, you know, renters have got to, they have to get the message from the city, from the owners, from the agents, that they cannot disturb the neighbors. It's just not right. And it is absolutely true that it is a nightmare if you're living next door to one of these operations and you don't know who's coming, and you just have repeated disturbances. I don't think that's the majority of these things at all, but the impacts of a few, you know, are upon many, especially on Newport Island. And that's the difference for me is, yes, I don't want to start something that, you know, sort of akin to spot zoning, which is know, sort of akin to spot zoning, which it sort of is, but this, to me, is an exception. It's an exception. It's literally a very dense, compacted space, and narrow streets, and everything we've heard about tonight. And these people need help. And this proposal here, without the owner occupied, I believe, is not going to deliver any real solution. Because you're not going to be able to track the run one rental a week thing very well. And when you have overnight occupancy of 10 people, if you have 16 people during the day, that more often than not is, you know, fairly, fairly noisy. So, but I wouldn't want to have the owner occupancy go out into the regular, our regular short-term rental areas. We're just not getting the same issues that we are on Newport Island. So, but, you know, this isn't perfect, and I think this isn't the end of it. We're just going to have to keep doubling down to do what we can, to find a solution as a community to this, to this, to this issue. And it's really an issue of what do we do with people that come to Newport to, to make a lot of noise and raise hell, you know? It's, that's the thing. We've got to be able to look them in the eye and say, "Hey, you're not being a good neighbor," and there's consequences to that. Because the people that are living in their homes, they have no option. They can't move. So many of our folks have lived in their homes 10 or 20 years. Their property taxes are, are low because they've been protected by Prop 13. And if they move, they lose that. So, what are they going to do in California? They've got to move to Texas or something, you know? It's just crazy. But there are numbers of people that have moved because they can't handle the neighbors, for sure. So, I don't like, you know, it's very limiting to this, having a, it's going to be tough doing an owner occupied, but I think it's, I think it would be the solution. Whether, and regardless of whether the Coastal Commission ultimately approves or not, I think we should give, we should give it a shot to see if we can make that go forward. And if we can't win on staff, that we win on, at the moment, with people expressing themselves as to their level of, of need in this situation. And incredibly, we've got 1,500, 150 cap that we're going to be at immediately when this opens up and the emergency's over, and then we'll be beyond that. And I don't think there's, you know, the idea of going, we could break numbers above 2,000 if we don't get this right. So, it's important that we just keep working on it. That's the main thing. So, and I just want to say to those that have come down tonight and been on the phone, I appreciate the participation. And we're just going to keep, we're just going to keep working on it. But, thank you.
All right. So, let's vote.
With Councilmembers Blom, Mayor Proton Muldoon, and Councilmember O'Neil voting no, the motion carried for three.
Thank you. And the last item for the evening is the coronavirus COVID update.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers, this shouldn't be very long. If we can put up the presentation and, oh, Jeff, do you want to, oh, thank you. So, the, as you know, the numbers come out from the state on Tuesdays, which kind of works well for us here. And the numbers are very good. Our positivity rate and the health equity metric for the county, at that 1.6 and 1.8 percentages, put us solidly in the yellow tier, which is a tier lower than what we're currently in, in the orange tier. And what's keeping us in that orange tier is that case per 100,000, that three, three per 100,000. That number has kind of stabilized. It had been decreasing. You can see that over the last month, how much it's gone down quite a bit, but then it's, it's kind of flattened right there, right now. So, that's really the key number right now we're looking at. And as you know, March 31st is when the county entered into the orange tier, and that was helpful in terms of really expanding some of the areas that could be opened up here. And we'd certainly like to see us moving into the yellow tier. And I think there's a possibility of that happening by the end of the month, and that just provides additional capacity. However, I think we've also have all heard that the governor has announced a, he's calling it beyond the blueprint, and removing all the tiers on June 15th. And that would essentially would be a full reopening of all business sectors with these two factors, the, that there's enough vaccine supply available, and that the hospitalizations and cases stay, stay low. So, I think that's really the focus right now that everybody is looking at. Here in the city, with being in the orange tier, that allowed us to fully open our central library and Mariners branch, so that's really good news. The doors are fully open and including from off of the Civic Center, which is nice for us, for the city employee side of things. We'll continue to have curbside service at Balboa and CDM Library branches, but are planning to open those up as we have staffing coming back up there as well.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just on that one real quick.
Yeah.
I had received, I've been, I'm sure you have too, I've been receiving lots of questions specific to the CDM branch.
Okay.
Do we have a guess?
We want, we're looking at end of May at this point, but it's just as soon as we can get the staffing, because there's a lot of part-time staff. And at the time last year, we had, you know, halted, or, you know, people were let go who didn't need more hours. So, we're just trying to ramp that up as quickly as we can right now. We're in the middle of that process.
Councilmember O'Neil and I will volunteer to help you get that open.
I will take that into account then, and sign you up for a full 40 hours. And then the other good news is, we're really seeing great demand on our programming and services. We're so excited about this summer, this year, and it was kind of amazing. The Camp Newport registration went and opened April 6th. I think it was 1,400 registrations, just like on that first day even, which is more than we've, we've done. And you can see here the statistics saying we're right now at about double the total typical first week number. So, certainly the demand's there, and people are signing up. And Jeff can probably speak a little bit too on the junior lifeguard side. We're seeing numbers, you know, up way, way up high. And then the other area that we're looking at, that we're continuing to monitor for, is guidance on the facility rentals and hopefully being able to allow that. We think there's going to be more information coming after April 15th, so we're very hopeful there to continue on that path. And then I just want to note on our small business grant side, you know, we've done several small business grant programs, working together with that Business Reopen Ad Hoc Committee. And the latest amount that we've gotten from the county, the 280,000, we are just about wrapped up with providing 56 businesses with grant funds there. We're working on our last two there. That's something we've took in internally to do, so we've really worked hard. And kudos to some of our staff, particularly Melanie Francis Chini in our office has really done an excellent job in getting those funds out. And we still, of course, have, we did give out the 2.1 million in CARES funds to businesses and continuing to work on our program with the CDPG funds as well. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jeff here to talk a little bit on our vaccine side and what's going on there.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Jeff Boils, your fire chief. On a vaccine, vaccine update front today, as you know, we held our, I'm going to move this so it might crease a little. Our second round over at the Oasis with the partnership with Hoag Hospital, giving out the Pfizer doses with our recreation senior services, our lifeguards, and our fire department. We had 312 people go through three weeks ago, and today they returned for their second shot, and we hit right around the 300 mark. So, there were very few no-shows from the last time, and that's, that's really positive. As you know, on Thursday, April 15th, we will open it up to everyone age 16 and older. So, that opens up a whole different venue of folks. It's, it's no longer a real restricted tier. 1.9 million doses have been distributed in Orange County already, which is pretty impressive. Nearly 23 million doses statewide. I lost my place here, so I'm not even going to say that I didn't. Okay, so I have some good news and some not-so-good news. Yesterday was actually great news. We finally got delivery of 500 Johnson &amp; Johnson doses from the state of California through the Blue Shield Network with the approval of, of the county. So, the Newport Beach Fire Department, to my knowledge, is, is the first and the only fire department in Orange County right now that has sole possession of our own vaccines that we get to do what we want with for those over the age of 16, so they can go to folks in our community or distribute them however we choose. Now that we woke up this morning, and we had some not-so-good news from the FDA and the CDC, given a pause to the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine because six females between the ages of 18 and 48 across the country exhibited some, some clotting symptoms, and they don't know if it's associated with it or not, but they are saying it's out of an abundance of caution. But given the fact that nearly 7 million doses have been given of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, that's a little less than 1 in a million, it is expected that the pause will be real short-term. So, we have those doses. They are, if you want to click the slide, I submitted a little photo there. So, that is our medical freezer slash refrigerator. It's right upstairs in Bay 2B, our fire administration. Those, the top there are the Johnson, little Johnson &amp; Johnson vials, like little chicklings in there, and there they sit. That's 500 doses worth over, the picture on the right was this afternoon over at the Oasis Center. Those vials are good for 90 days in that particular unit right there. So, we're okay for, for several months. It's not like they're going to go bad in the next 24 hours or so. On that note, here locally, the, our positive of COVID patients that we're transporting to the hospital are almost mirroring exactly the trend that we're seeing on the countywide and statewide level. I'll, I'll share with you some stats. Our positive transports in November were 12 that we took in our ambulances over to Hoag Hospital. December, it spiked to 74. In January, it was 61, and in February fell to 14. March was three, and then we've had two so far in April. So, you could see the, the steep incline and then the steep decline. Our overall transports for medical volume calls are up 6%, so we're starting to see some of the ancillary transports go back up as well, not necessarily COVID-related, though. And then lastly, I just want to finish with our junior lifeguard program. We had 1,800 kids pass the swim test a couple of weeks ago. 1,800 kids is by far and away the most we've ever seen. The largest program we've ever hosted was a little over 1,300. So, I, it wasn't rhetorical last year when I stood up here and said, "We'll be back next year, bigger and better." It far exceeded what we had expected. So, that obviously prompted a meeting to determine whether or not we need to start turning people away, or if we just expand and try and accommodate. And the lifeguards, to their credit, Chief Halfide and Mike Year, they're, they're planning to just expand and accommodate, order more gear and equipment if they need to. We still have the three locations, so we'll, we'll work it that way, and we'll figure it out because there's certainly a pent-up demand for youth in our, in our cities, both through the recreation department and the junior lifeguard. So, with that, I stand ready for questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll go out to public comment. Seeing none. Any phone calls? All right. Additional council comments? All right. Next on the agenda is a motion for reconsideration. Madam Clerk, please read the public announcement.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted for the prevailing side.
Great. No motion for reconsideration. All right. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Frank Train. And Frank and his wife, Alan, were friends of mine, and some people lead incredible lives, and Frank's one of them. And he was worthy of such good fortune, I believe. Frank was born in La Crosse, Wisconsin in 1931 to Ruben and Helen Train. His grandfather had immigrated from Tromso, Norway in 1864, and with Frank's father incorporated the Train Company in 1913. Today, Train Technologies is a global leader in HVAC systems with international headquarters in Swords, Ireland. Train employs more than 29,000 people at 104 manufacturing locations in 28 countries. In addition to its activity in the HVAC business, Train is involved in energy conservation and renewable energy projects. Frank graduated from St. Paul's School in Concord, New Hampshire in 1950. He was admitted to Stanford after his junior year of high school. Frank attended Stanford School of Engineering, graduating cum laude in 1953, receiving the honorary engineering distinction of top beta five. He attended Stanford Graduate School of Business class of 1955. Frank and his sweetheart, Jane Jean Farwell, were married in September 1951 while they were still at Stanford, and in the last, in this last year, celebrated their 69th wedding anniversary. Frank and Alan have three children, Marty Chapman, married to Dave, Cindy Christensen, married to John, and Byron, married to Frances. They had nine grandchildren and 10 great-grandchildren. Their granddaughter, Amy, was killed in a tragic car accident in 2007. Frank was on, was on active duty in the Navy from 1955 through 1958, and served as a submarine repair officer in the Charleston Naval Shipyard. He earned the permanent rank of full lieutenant and was in the process of attaining the rank of lieutenant commander when he finished his service. Frank is a life member of the Naval Submarine League. In 1958, the Trains moved from, moved to La Crosse, and Frank worked for the Train Company as manufacturing engineer. He eventually held the position of general superintendent of the La Crosse factories and became the U.S. manager of branch plants. In 1966, Frank was awarded the honor of Kentucky Colonel by the Kentucky governor for building a factory in Lexington. Frank was on the Train Board of Directors for 24 years. The company was sold in 1984 to American Standard. In 1963, the Trains moved to Newport Beach, where they continued to raise their family. Their grandchildren, their children and grandchildren lived nearby, and over the years, Frank and Alan's rambling home on Newport Bay was a frequent gathering place for the family. His grandchildren were an immense pleasure to him, and he worked on keeping them all laughing. Frank loved surfing 80 days a year and kept at it until he was 85. He loved skiing and took the family to Snowmass 45 Februaries in a row. He and Alan played golf at the Ironwood Country Club in Palm Desert, where they had a home. Frank and Alan liked cruising in small yachts all over the world, mostly on their boat, Hallelujah, and they enjoyed summer cruising to Catalina Island. They enjoyed friendships at Newport Harbor Yacht Club and Cruising Club of America and Santa Ana Country Club. Frank was an active member of the St. James Anglican Church and served as treasurer and senior warden. Frank studied the first five centuries of Christian church and loved teaching the Great Reformation of the 16th century from the Anglican perspective. In 1990, Frank decided to devote his full time to church work. He was one of the founders of the American Anglican Council, which helped form the Anglican Church in North America, consisting now of more than 1,000 parishes. Frank was made an honorary lay canon of the church in 2013. Frank will be remembered for his love of God, family, his generosity, wisdom, and his many athletic abilities, his humor, and his limericks. He could fix anything, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, be it in the house or on the boat, and his happy humming let you know where he was at all times. Frank always said that his true legacy was his beloved wife, Alan, of 69 years, and family. All 29 members of the four generations of his family live within 10 miles of each other and enjoy spending time together. Their shared Christian faith continues to bond them together. We're adjourned.